Thank you so much for bringing us here together. Thank you for allowing us to live in such a great city, and in such a great state, and such a great country. Dear Lord, it's a special time of year where we give thanks for your son, Jesus Christ, and as we go through the holiday season, may we remember it's all about you, and it's all about being with our family and friends in celebration. Guide us in tonight's meeting. Give us the direction for your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Second item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Go ahead.
Move to approve.
Okay, we got a first and second.
Mayor.
Yes.
I need to remove item E from the consent agenda tonight. It's been removed indefinitely.
Okay. So it's not, it's just being, we're not moving it down?
No. Just removing it tonight.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Third item is citizens' comments. And, okay, thank you. Fourth item is award and recognition, and I believe Mr. Hall has something special for us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, and if you don't mind, I'm gonna go to the podium and read my thing on the Butterfly Garden that Brian Puzell presented to me. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna go to the podium.
Nope, that would be great.
We have a group of ladies here tonight. The name of their group is WINE, which means Women of Worth. They are an organization that honors various things that happen, and they have done a great job for our Bowie Park, and I'm gonna read this presentation. "The City of Fairview would like to recognize the Women of Worth, group for their contribution to the newly installed butterfly garden located in Bowie Nature Park. They partnered with an anonymous donor to fully fund the 36 plants situated in a flower bed overlooking Lake Van. The group aided the park staff in this to replace a beautiful forest pansy redbud tree that had been recently removed due to TVA penalty." Not penalty, policy, excuse me. "The objective of the project for the group was to do something meaningful in the memory of Ms. Linda Taylor, who was a member of their group and had recently passed. A memorial plaque in her honor has been placed in the garden. As a city, we were honored to collaborate with the Women of Worth group in the project in order to preserve Ms. Taylor's memory. As we appreciate all the efforts by the members of this to help complete the project, we would also like to thank Grow Well for the design assistance and providing the quality plants that will attract butterflies for the community to enjoy and view them." Tonight, I would love to introduce these ladies, and one of their members has a poem that I would love for her to read, and at the end of that, I'd like them to take pictures with the commissioners around like y'all normally do, if you don't mind. And first off, I'm gonna bring up Ms. Tish Fisher. She is the one that first contacted myself and Brian about this project. Wanda Johnson. If y'all will come up, please. Jenny Scott. Janelle Pinkerton. Gay Welch. Catherine Jones. Linda Sullivan. Glenda Stinson. Christine Stinson. Gail Delangford. And Elise Puett. And Ms. Gay, I believe you have a presentation you would like to read to us. If you would step up here.
Life is like a butterfly, softly, softly. One never knows why. It teaches you, it touches your cheek, fragile and sweet, like blooming flowers. Life loves and trails, lasts only for the hours that they touch your heart, then say goodbye. Life is like a butterfly.
I would also like to thank the park staff, Keith Paisley, Brian Mazzell, Ginny Herrera, and Justin Tomlin for the help that they did in organizing this butterfly garden. If you ladies would circle around up here, and the board of commissioners would come around or stand up in behind them, we'd love to take y'all pictures. Okay?
We've got several missing.
Yeah, just come on in front of us. Thank you so much. We appreciate everything. Can you get them all in, or do they need to?
Yeah, that's good. Just a little.
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Wanda, Ms. Tommy.
I don't think you're gonna be seen.
You're gonna have to stop.
Ms. Fisher, did you need to say anything?
I'm Tish Fisher, and I just want to give you a little bit of history about who we are and why we're together. We're a group of ladies who are walking a journey different from anyone we've ever walked before. We're widows, and we formed a group, it was four of us at the time, that's four and a half years ago now, there are 20. We had 21. One passed away this fall, this summer. We felt, we felt like the best healing tool, other than our Lord and Savior, is helping someone else. So we try to go about, and since we all have, we all grew up in Fairview and have ties here, even if we don't live in Fairview anymore, Fairview's very important to us. So we love the people here, and we just try to reach out and do some small things for people who need, whatever that is. If it's shop with the cop, which we did on Saturday, or helping people at Maple Village, or wherever, nursing homes, or wherever we can reach out and help someone, that's what we try to do. And I want to thank Mr. Hall so much. He was such a great help. And Brian at the park for helping put together this butterfly garden. That's important to us, and it's, I feel like it'll be an important thing for the park. I envision something happening from that, whether it's an encouragement just for someone else to reach out and do something, I don't know what it is, but I see some things coming from that. So I want to thank all of you for having us here tonight, and we'll leave shortly. Won't interfere with your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I will give y'all a second. Feel free to stay, but we will not take any offense. If y'all would like to exit, feel free. Mr. Hall, did we have any other awards or recognition?
That's all I had tonight, but I think that was a great one.
Oh, it was. Thank you. Okay, public announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to remind everyone of the admission testings on Monday and Tuesday from 7:30 till noon.
Okay. And then we are gonna be closed, what, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day?
Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and New Year's Day.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other announcements that any of the other commissioners need to share?
Amen.
Okay. Staff comments, and we'll go ahead and start with you, Mr. Hall, for codes. How about that?
Thank you, ma'am. It's been a very exciting week already. The Brownland Farms Group, is now called Bellhaven, was in staff review this week. Will be on the Planning Commission Agenda, or the first Planning Commission in January. Poston Place has an extension that will be on that Agenda. These are subject to WILs engineering reviews. We also have a 72-unit garden apartment that later I will read something on that from the developer, that will be on that Agenda. We also, I believe that the extension, or the addition to the high school on the auditorium, I think that's gonna be on the Agenda in the Planning Commission. So it's been a pretty exciting week already. So that's all I have on codes right now.
Okay, great. Okay, you wanna share anything about census, or, okay, Ms. Johnson?
I received an update from CRIS Communications as far as where we are on the census, and the number of households they've counted after the second letter was 1,423 households and 3,799 individuals. I have to say, I'm a little disappointed in these numbers so far. I think the turnout has been very poor from our citizens, and I'd just like to encourage everybody to talk to their friends and neighbors about getting this in. It is very important for the city as far as our revenue goes. They are sending a third letter out right after the holidays to be turned in by the middle of January, so please, please, encourage each other to get this information in so that they don't have to do as much follow-up afterwards.
Definitely. And it's real easy to do online, and the postage is paid, so it's not like, all you have to do is stick the, you know, envelope in the mail, and it's really easy, and we know we did not decrease, so if everybody can just take the extra few minutes and fill it out, it's so important for us to get it done, and, you know, it just makes life easier to do it quickly instead of having to have them knock on all these doors, so definitely. Did you have something?
Well, this will be the last letter that goes out, won't it?
This will be the last letter, the third and final letter, and the letter says, "Final Reminder" on the envelope and on the letter itself, so just please get them in.
Once that's done, Brandy, do we then have a chance to go call or knock on the doors and this type thing?
From our understanding with the CRIS group, they will, they will first try to make phone calls for those that they can reach by phone and verify the family members living there, and then at that point, they will, as a last resort, they will do door-knocking.
Okay.
So that group will actually do the?
Yes.
Oh, good. That's good.
Please, please, take the time. It really will benefit our community, so, and I'm sure we'll talk about it a lot more and remind you, but if you'll take the time when you're sticking your holiday cards in the mail, throw the census in, that would be great. Mr. Darty, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mayor. I prepared a PowerPoint.
Okay, great.
And I have not, I will get this emailed out tomorrow. I just finished up everything today, getting my PDFs in line and everything, but I'll also get it on the website tomorrow for any citizens that are curious. Okay, we work. I was encouraged by the final numbers in November. What I've got in this PowerPoint is pretty much me. Make sure I'm working. Let me make sure my clicker works. There it goes. All right, for, this is for the month of November. These are our top 10 revenues. We brought in $390,986. As you see, we, we brought in 24% of our revenue in the month of November was property Our expenditures for the month of November were $367,535. These are our top 10 expenditures. Of our 29%, they're all broken down into less than 1%. Of course, employee expenditures are the driving force of our expenditures. This is a graph that kind of shows where we are compared to where we, where our budget is. This is, the blue line is our budget, and for November, we, we had, in our cash flow statement, budgeted $386,197,000, and we actually brought in $39986 for an over, over, we brought in more revenue than we projected, $4,789. Year-to-date, we budgeted, we thought we would have brought in $1,687,640. We have brought in $1,935,545, which gives us an overage of $247,905. So that's very encouraging going forward. I don't see primarily most of this is sales tax, and we've had city auction sales and therefore, but there, it's, it is encouraging. These are our expenditures, which is encouraging as well. For the month of November, we came in $37,827 under what was projected. For year-to-date, we're under projected expenditures by $105,053. So I'm very, we, we monitor expenditures very closely. The department heads are doing an exceptional job of taking care of their business. This is our revenue versus expenditures, and I think this is an astounding number based on where we are in our revenue cycle. Year-to-date, we have brought in $1.9 million, and we have spent 1.8 for a surplus of $83,000. And we're, like I said, we're, our property taxes will peak in December, and we should have a substantial surplus in December, January, and February, which we should be able to take care of our goals that we, we set out in the budget process with that month, with those surpluses. This is the discouraging part, but it's where we are. We have an estimated fund balance of $545,304. In our general, in our unassigned, which is our operating account, we have a negative I did receive an encouraging remark from, I had a, had a conversation with Sarah Hardy on how to account for that 227 liability that, that got me in audit, and she says, "As soon as I pay off the $214,000 that goes to pay for Cumberland and Cox Pike, I can reverse that $227,000 entry like it never happened." So that'll automatically drop that number by $227,000, so that, I was glad to hear And that pretty much is, is my report. Like I said, I'll get everything out in detail to you guys tomorrow and put it on the website, and going forward, I'll try to, try to have that to you before the meetings.
Thank you so much for doing that. It does help us get a good picture, and even though it still, you know, looks gloom, I cannot. It's actually, that we've gotten, and I think we're looking good considering how we started the year, and really, really proud of department heads and you and Mr. Hall for keeping our expenditures down and getting us through this rough time of year especially. So excellent job, and, you know, I know that big negative number is gonna haunt us all year, but, you know, it's very hopeful that, you know, we have the potential of getting where we need to be. So I just, you know, I appreciate it and just keep us informed what we need to know. That way, there won't be any surprises, you know, at the end, but I, I am thrilled that we are looking good, and I hope that we'll just keep increasing through the year. Anybody have any questions for Tom? Nope. Okay, thank you. Mr. Paisley, do you have anything?
Community volunteers coming out for Community Parks Day. It was a big hit, big success. I want to thank the friends for coming out and giving us the support they always do. And also with the beautification project on the restrooms down there, got a new paint job. And also want to remind people, we got Memory Tree this Saturday from 12 to 3:00. So anyone that has lost somebody or would like to put an ornament on the tree, it's this Saturday from 12 to 3:00.
Okay, great. And did you have, did you want to speak during department head, or?
I've got a question for.
Sure, I'm sorry.
She's heard comments.
Okay, one second. He has still had a question, I didn't realize. Sorry.
I take, I take my grandkids out to the park every so often. I was noticing in the swing section, where we've got the handicap swing that's there, it's pitted really bad from people right there. It almost looks like it's hazard for somebody because they have to manually push that swing back and forth. Is there any way we could look into filling it in, something possibly getting some mats?
Yeah, we have been looking into different things like that. We'll have to obviously come back with, in a budget year and...
Okay. I think that would be safe for people to use, because it kind of hazards right there with that big swing. Somebody fall.
Right.
That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We'd just like to take this opportunity at this time to remind the citizens during this festive season, yet nationally, Christmas trees unfortunately account for, on average, 300 structure fires and 21 deaths a year. So please, if you have a natural Christmas tree, remember to water it. They could drink up to a quart of water a day, and don't overload your electrical outlets, please. So, yeah, we don't have any statistics in this city.
Yeah.
Additionally, we're asked to remind people that on the 27th, in the equestrian side of the park, you'll be able to drop off your natural Christmas tree starting on that date. Please remove all lights and decorations before dropping them off. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much. And it's so important to remember about the trees. I saw a program the other day of a water tree, the rate it burned, like if you had it watering it every day versus one that wasn't, and it was really interesting to see the rates of the two, you know, burning. So definitely, thank you for the reminder. We want everybody to be safe. Any other staff? I guess I'm good now. Do we? Okay, we'll move on. We have the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Check.
Okay, first and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. No old business, that brings us to new business. A, discuss and take action on preserving the appearance right before the Board of Commissioners regarding the Cox Pike development. A request of the developer, Tom Smythe. The hearing will be held January 21st, 2016. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, what we're doing is asking for an extension until Larry gets back. Mr. Smythe does have a right of appeal to this, this board, and Larry's very familiar with this, and all we're asking is, is an extension of time until the 21st, so that's all I needed to know.
Second.
Okay, first and second, any discussion? So the deadline, this is just extending the deadline to, for Larry?
On his 60-day right of appeal. And he is present, so we're not taking the action without his knowledge.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brandy, do we get our first and second on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because I know I went straight to Mr. Hall. Just wanted to cross that. Don't want any more delays. Discuss and take action on approval for application to assist the firefighter grant. AFG Hudgens, come join us.
Yes, ma'am. It's AFG Assist Firefighter Grant time again for this year's application period's opened up. Before we put all the effort into writing the grant and getting it approved, we wanted to ensure yet the board would be willing to meet the match on it. For a city our size, if we were awarded all three possible categories we could apply in, the max federal money we'd be able to receive would be $1 million. It's a 5% match, so the max match from the city would be $50,000. The one thing that we do not have any control of is, is if we're awarded it, it could come as early as this April or this time next year as to when the match would be due. From the time the award is granted, I believe we have 60 days to 90 days to actually do the match. So there's a possibility we might have to do it in this year's budget cycle. Most likely, it'll fall next budget cycle, but we wanted to ensure yet prior to submitting for it, the board would be willing to meet the match.
And what is the, it's, is there, there's a large usage? I think somebody was telling me it could be for equipment or...
Yes, ma'am. There's three general categories in it that we'd be looking at. One of them would be a vehicle acquisition to attempt to acquire a fire engine to replace Engine 32, which is over 20 years old at this point and need of replacement. The other would be a regional vehicle grant, which, because of the way State of Tennessee mutual aid works, all of our vehicles sort of a regional aid already, and we'd be asking for a air trailer, a light, and rehab vehicle under that category. And then we still are dissecting the paperwork that the federal government put out to figure out what would be the most appropriate piece of equipment for us to request under the Equipment and Operations Section of it.
Any questions? And what's the, is that 95.5?
It's 95% federal and 5% US, yes, ma'am.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, got a first and second. That biggest thing that scares me on this is when you talk big equipment, like... That biggest thing that scares me on this is when you talk big equipment, like trucks, I mean, that could be a large amount that we would have to have. Even 5%, if it's how much? What's the biggest?
The largest number we'd have as a match would be $50,000.
That's the most we could be up because the cap's at a million.
Okay, okay.
That's as high as it could go, is $50,000.
Okay.
What are the chances of us receiving all three?
Very slim, because every city in the nation is facing budget difficulties. More and more fire departments have applied for it every year, so it's a slimmer and slimmer chance that you're going to get it. We have a fairly good chance because of the situation we're in in the budget process within the city at this point and because we have an apparatus that's over 20 years old. So we have a chance of that. Last year, everybody of all the departments had asked for a engine, they only awarded 4% of them. So, you know, it's like any other time you apply for a federal grant, you know, it's like you're playing the lottery, but if you don't play, you can never win. And it would be much better to get somebody else to pay for 95% of an apparatus than to have to have the taxpayers pay the entire 100% of an apparatus.
Yeah. Okay, discussion?
If we replace any equipment with this money, is, can we sell any of the old stuff to try to recoup some of this 5%?
Part of the requirement is, is yet any of the old apparatus have to go out of service completely. It cannot be moved to another area.
What, I think, what you're saying, I understand why it couldn't be moved to another area in the department, but what about outside the city?
Um, they're really strict on yet what gets replaced because it's already passed its service life, yet you cannot usually sell it on down the road. We're gonna have to check the rules because the rules fluctuate every year. You know, like air packs and all of our other small, you know, incidental equipment that's on there, yeah, we could rehab that in some manner into other apparatuses and other locations if it still has a viable service life. But we're gonna have to digest and see what their exact rules are this year as if we could sell the vehicle when it's taken out of service.
Okay, so, and there is a likelihood it could go into the next budget, but there's obviously no guarantee. And it's broken up in three different grants?
Yes ma'am, it's all under the AFG and there's three subcategories to it. So there, each grant we, technically we'd be submitting three grants for review purposes because they could award us one and shoot down the other two.
Go ahead.
Tom, hypothetically, if we had to have $50,000 in April, would we be able to do that?
Currently, we're, we're at $247,000 ahead of where we thought we'd be in revenue. I don't see revenues going, doing a reverse trend. We would be, I, I believe we would still be able to, to meet all of our goals and objectives if we had to make a $50,000 expenditure in April.
Would it have to come out of the operating account or could it come out of, is there anywhere else we could get this money from that you know of? In terms of other accounts is what I'm referencing.
Um, I believe it would have to come out of general fund. Let me look real quick. I, I know, in fact, I'm 100% it would.
I certainly hate to pass on getting the federal government to pay 95% of the cost associated with this equipment, but just want to make sure that if it did happen in April, this budget year, that we would have the money, you know, to pay for it, if we were expected to pay for it. And is it one, is it a grant where we would have to pay the entire amount and then they would pay us on the back end? In other words, would we have to do a grant anticipation note to be able to cover this or how would that work?
No sir, generally we're able to pay, they'll pay the 95% upfront of it on the equipment.
I, you know, I still go back to bodies, you know, we, we had to do cuts, so I, you know, I hate without knowing, but there's still no guarantee that we would even get it and, you know, hate not to try. And I feel like that, wish we would have done something like that prior, you know, and then we wouldn't have the note of the, you know, engine or, you know, before. So I think it is smart and we are in the situation where as a city, we are gonna have to go after some of these grants to get some of the stuff that we need to continue growing in a difficult time. So, but I'm still a little, you know, torn over the fact that, but there's no guarantee. So I, I don't know, I don't know, I kind of struggle with it. But 95% is hard to, um, walk away and just not let y'all try and see. And I know it wouldn't look favorable if we didn't go through with it, but there is always the opportunity. If everything went south and we did get this grand grant, then, you know, it's not the first time we've had to turn a grant down. So I almost feel like you can try and try your luck and see if we can get it and hopes that we will know better in April and how to fund it is, would still keep us moving forward.
Yes ma'am, most likely it will be in next year's budget cycle, but because of federal government shutdown chances and other things, we just don't have a, you know, I can't guarantee it would not happen as early as that. That'd be the absolute earliest. Most likely it would fall into next year's budget.
Yeah. Well, Mr. Hall's learned really quick and of course y'all's grants may be a little different, but some of these other ones, there's definitely delays and we're, we've done waiting and they've done waiting. So, did you have a comment?
I just understand the budgets, I mean, the grants under a different perspective, not under the federal, but.
Oh, well, so there may be more efficient.
But what, what we have to go through here to move forward with them is, it's kind of, you have to make sure you got every detail covered, you really do. But we're learning and we move forward, so that's a good thing. We got grants that we, they're about, one of them's already come to fruition and another one is on the way and hopefully the third one is pretty well underway. And then you're gonna report on the fourth one.
Yes. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you ma'am, gentlemen.
Okay, that brings us to item 11, City Managers, items for discussion.
I want Brandy to read an email and I don't want this taken the wrong way. It's promoting me, but I want to lead into something else.
Go ahead, promote yourself.
Gotta find it first, I thought I had it right at the top of.
This is from Stuart Rutledge. It says, "Thank you very much for all your help Wayne. You may take it for granted how thoroughly yet efficiently you run things, but it is extraordinary. Having gone through rezoning in a great variety of cities in this region, your work and courteousness during that work have been greatly appreciated. I just wanted to thank you specifically for that. Sharon has completed my zoning application, so you just let me know what our calendar is. I've also talked to my hotel friends and one already expressed interest. I may be emailing you about having him come visit soon. It would be great if we could make all this work." So there's great potential there.
I want to thank Mr. Rutledge for that, but basically I could not get a compliment like that if it weren't for staff and teamwork that we have here. The teamwork is not only from staff, it's all the teamwork. It's the Board of Commissioners, it's the Planning Commission, it's everything. Board of Zoning Appeals, Tree Board, I want to thank everyone for, for the year that we've gone through. I see the, the light at the end of the tunnel on so much, there's so much happening in this town that it's unreal. Mayor, you are with me in a lot of meetings and how much we're, we're now noticed in everything that we go to, from the MPO, the GNRC, the Williamson Economic Chamber, the Middle Tennessee Electric, I mean, Middle Tennessee Industrial Agency. The counties around us are taking notice too, Fairview, Dixon, Hickman, Ourone County, believe it or not. They're taking more notice of us than they ever have in the past. But as far as teamwork goes, they mentioned Sharon, Sharon's doing a fantastic job. John Bledsoe has been so much help here lately. I can't toot their horn any, anymore than anyone can help. And I couldn't get done what I get done without their help. Will Owen is great with, with organizing this and this is what, what we're leaning toward in, in the Coach Department. We're straightening out a lot that we see the future bringing. But I want to promote every division in this town. The Parks Department is just doing a fantastic job. We all know what, what the Public Works Boys have on them. The Fire Department has so much compliments I hear all the time, but the Police Department with what they've been going through here lately with Shop of the Cop, the thing that's already gone viral on the Crosspoint Church.
Yeah.
And as I stated earlier last night to them, I believe, when I was talking to T-Dot yesterday, one of them was actually a member of Crosspoint Church. And he started pointing out to the director, his director, his boss, where these, where these locations are at. And he said, "I will be on Facebook tonight looking at that," and she said she would too. But there's so much excitement in this town, it takes teamwork from Brandy in the recorders, Tom in the finance, I don't know what I'd do without them. Diane and Gina in the courts, but Gina pitches in and Diane does too. Susan in the, as far as she's doing the, the bill paying, she's doing payroll. I, I just don't, the staff that we have here is, is remarkable. And I just wanted to take this time at the end of the year to promote everybody that brings this teamwork together. From y'all up there to the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, Park Department, Park Committee, the Tree Board, and all the staff. I just want to thank them all. And I think I, oh, I do have one other thing. Wanted to promote the road paving on North, on New Hope, New Hope Pass, and Dice Lamply was completed this week. It's just a fantastic drive now to drive those areas there and, you know, so, and I know the people that commute to Dice Lamply every morning, that is a back way to cut easy to get to the interstate. They've got a much safer route, ride now. Thank you. Merry Christmas to everybody too.
Thank you, excellent. And thank you for all you do. Do you have anything tonight as far as you want to give an update on Larry or?
Mayor Commissioners, I came back from court Monday and Larry was back in his office and working and looking chipper. And if he didn't have the cast on his leg, I think it was a soft cast and a walker, you wouldn't know he was ever out, so he'll be back with you soon. This is, I want to thank you because this has been a learning experience for me. I represent a, now presently, a very small city and this has helped me too and I appreciate your tolerance with me trying to get adjusted to the situation and thank you for having me. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you. Commissioner Johnson, do you want to start us tonight?
Absolutely. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Same with me, Merry Christmas to everybody, the staff, thank you for a great year. To the citizens, thank you for all that you do, the volunteering, the pitching in, different things that goes on. If that's what Fairview's about, it makes you feel good in a, in a way, when we still see people pulled over on the side of the road when a funeral goes by, people standing out with their hats over their, over their hearts, this, this is a good city. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Basal?
Just again, remind everybody to please fill out the census form. It's, it's very important. We, we made an investment and we, we need your help to, to, with that project, so please do that and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, be safe in your travels.
Thank you. Commissioner Cracher?
Thank you mayor, I just want to echo Commissioner Basal, certainly we need to get those census forms filled out and in, that's, that's really important. We've, we've committed substantial amount of money to that and we hope to have a return on that investment. So please get those in, it's, it's for the, the betterment of the city. Wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And if you've not seen the video that Crosspoint put together, I wish we'd have played it tonight.
Oh, that would have been great.
In fact, I thought about mentioning it earlier in the week and just, it slipped my mind, but it's very.
It's online?
I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, it's online and, you know, it would have been a great thing to play, but nonetheless, it's very moving. It involves some folks here in Fairview and the Fairview Police Department and very moving videos. If you get an opportunity, look at that.
Can y'all pull it up on YouTube while I talk and play it as we end? Do we have that capability?
While he's checking, I am, I have talked to Sissy and we're looking at to possibly getting it on Channel 19.
Okay, good. Yeah, that'll be good. Okay, no pressure. Okay, I'll, first of all, Mr. Hall wanted me to share about the multimodem grant, which is a 95.5 grant that we applied for. And it, we actually applied last year, but we lost out. And this year we got it, so it was really exciting news. I think it just, I'm thrilled, Mr. Hall and myself, because it just, the difference a year made and just some of those relationships and having those connections to help move this forward. But then also, Mr. Tucker and Mr. Rowe worked together and put together the grant. It is gonna enable us to continue the sidewalk going down Highway 100, starting about fast-paced and to close the gap on the left-hand side of the road. We were wanting it to be a widening project, but in having some expert advice as they were doing the grant process, to be more successful, we needed to keep it under a certain amount. So this sidewalk though, was a huge safety concern. As many of y'all see people, we have sidewalks and then these huge gaps and people are still walking it. So as far as the safety issue, it was definitely a huge one and this will help us keep the citizens safe. So it's a huge grant and I just want to thank all the people that helped put that together. And I think I probably, this group's heard me say and I probably said it, maybe the Planning Commission and a couple times, but we, a year has made a huge difference. When we walked in in November and Mr. Hall had already been attending some of these meetings and I saw the 2040 plan and our name wasn't on it, it just, you know, devastated me. And so I, it was huge, huge difference to even be on the, the list, the 2040 plan and then also as the alternate backup of potential needs. And we're working really close with the county and the other mayors trying to come together and, you know, do some potential projects and just a really exciting time. But I think as far as Mr. Hall and I can finally feel like, okay, we are accomplished, we've done these connections, they are paying attention and we're getting somewhere. And this grant may not seem like a lot to some people because we have successfully got grants in the past, but it just meant so much because it was not an easy grant, you know, there was only two people selected and they did announce it at the last meeting. Now, we have to get the rebel. Now, we have to get the rebel stamp from T-Dot, but they typically go through the MPO's recommendations. So had a lot of help with that and with the MPO. And so anything else I left off about it?
You did great. Thank you.
Okay. I know I talked a lot about it, but anyway, thrilled, absolutely thrilled. I do agree, please, please, please do your censuses. I mean, just please, you know? If we need, I have brought censuses into City Hall and hand-delivered them myself. If you are worried about that, you know, glad, I'm sure any of the board members would be glad if you're a neighbor or you run into them, please do it. I also want to kind of brag and thank the city staff. We do have a wonderful group of employees and they work really hard. And we have seen, even though the whole budget process was painful and difficult, but with their help, we have overcome a lot this year and what a difference a year makes. We're not out of the woods yet, but we're in the right direction. And it just takes a wonderful team of people supporting each other. We live in one of the best communities, in one of the best counties, in one of the best states, in the best country. And I think so many times we take for granted how fortunate we are. So with that being said, with it being the holiday season, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, and just spend the time with your family and look forward to seeing everybody, a new year, new visions, keep moving us forward. If I can have a motion, we'll adjourn.